Planning Commission meeting to order. We do have a quorum. First order of business is roll call.
Sure, Commissioner Walters. John, are you frozen? I see you there. Commissioner Gasanova?
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Manaus?
Here.
Commissioner Bellows?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds, I don't see yet. Commissioner Paulson? And Chair Petrie?
Here. Okay, let's go right into the approval of the minutes for the last meeting, February 24th. Did anyone, has everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes? Okay, does anyone see any need for any changes or corrections to those minutes? Okay, so then I'll just need a motion to approve the minutes. Does anyone, all right, I'll make the motion. I move that we approve the minutes as presented for the February 24th meeting. Annie seconded, okay. All who's in favor, just wanted to just raise your hand. Okay, anyone opposed? I see no opposition, slow the motion.
People are talking on the screen, I can't hear a damn thing. Sorry.
Motion passes unanimously. You gotta love Zoom. So, moving on now, we are going to have some discussion. First up is the master plan update. I'm not sure who's doing that, so.
Sure, I'll start. We're kind of waiting on Keith to kind of get in here, but where we're at, we've had, we're basically on task three. We just completed task three.
Ronnie, who's talking?
That's me.
Mike is right there.
You're not muted, John. And so we basically start, wrapped up task three, which was existing conditions. We still have a long ways to go. We've held our first public open house. Can we just mute, John? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we've held our first public open house. It went pretty well. I think 3G consulting did a great job of doing a presentation and fielding the questions. We had about 65 people at one point in time on the list, so it turned out pretty nice, pretty good. Things that continue to raise questions, there was a gentleman who presented some figures on cost of bridges, where the road should be, those sort of things. Those are all be kind of taken into consideration through our TSP process as well as master plan in the end. Also looking at possibly how we spur the economic development on our side. What kind of businesses are we looking for? And also kind of the density became a question, kind of like, what kind of density are you going to be putting in here? What that's going to do to property values? There was some concerns that if you have low to moderate income housing, that it lowers property values. You know, part of the problem that we face is compliance with the House Bill 2001 and 2003, which we'll go through today, as well as the conditions of approval from the metro urban growth boundary expansion. Honestly, I think Marcy and her team have done a fantastic job of kind of melding those pieces together in a manner in which will create smooth transitions throughout our city. And, you know, a lot of these worries and concerns will not really materialize in the long run. A lot of it's just out of fear of the unknown. So, you know, hopefully our consultants and everyone can put together some really compelling packages as we move forward. But I'm going to hand it off to Keith to begin with and go over any sort of things that I might have missed with the master plan. And we'll go from there.
I think Mike covered it really pretty well. We do have a meeting with the consulting team, Mike and I, this afternoon to talk about some preliminary ideas for alternative concepts. I think we'll be spending a fair amount of time on what we want to do with the town center as far as the orientation and access and those sorts of things. One of the, one of the items that I think we'll be talking with Washington County and Tigerd on is, and this relates to the TSP as well, is what kind of street crossing opportunities will there, will we be able to have on Beef Ben Road and what makes the most sense for providing a good blend of pedestrian accessibility and then also good automotive access? So, and that'll be really key as to how the design works on both sides as well. So, we'll be talking with a number of folks on that one as well. But I think that's really about it. I think it's going along pretty well. And like I've said before, this is really a great opportunity that we can also be considering House Bill 2001 as we do the master plan, as opposed to try to superimpose that or insert it after we've already figured something out.
Okay. Is that all you guys, is that it for the master plan update?
I was just going to ask by like a show of hands, how many planning commissioners were able to attend that open house? Four, okay. All right. So you guys were there, you saw most of the stuff that was questions, of course. Transportation was a, was a big one, but I think, you know, housing was, was another concern.
Okay, development code update.
I'm going to let Marcy McMilli take this one over. Her and her team have been working hard on the House Bill 2001, 2003, and chugging along. So Marcy, over to you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Good morning, planning commissioners. And I think I'm going to share the memo on my screen so that I can walk you through, just walk you through it page by page. Can everyone see this page? I see nodding, okay. And let me make it a bit bigger. So, we, we met with you at a recent planning commission to talk more about the amendments themselves. Now we're moving into the more refined amendments package. And I'd like to talk about two parts of this. One is the amendments themselves and how they're moving forward. And the other is about the public involvement efforts that we're going to be making. They're admittedly quite on a very short timeframe because we're required to have these amendments adoption ready by May. However, the, there is some information that will be going up on the King City master plan website that links to this project and to give people information specifically about the middle housing project. I'll go over those after I talk about the amendments themselves. And so this is page one of the memo. It just helps you understand where we are in the process. We're, we're in task three and we will be heading for this public hearing. And the planning commission's role will be to review the revised amendments that come forward at that point in order to make recommendations to the city council. So, I'll just cover some repeat information about the project. This project is coming to the King City because of House Bill, House Bill that requires all cities in the state of Oregon to incorporate middle housing forms into their single dwelling neighborhoods. I think it's timed really well for King City in that it's happening while the master plan process is happening. And so they can be very well coordinated. This housing, it's code amendments. It will update the comprehensive plan and the community development code. And it will apply to the city, the existing King City, as well as the new Kingston Terrace acreage. And there are two separate paths for those projects. I'm going to focus more on the existing King City applicable amendments today. But later, as we get into the master plan process, we will be focusing on the House Bill compliance through that project. So, an overview of the articles and the chapters of the community development code that we will be amending are listed here. I'm just going to go through each of these one by one. First of all, we're planning to reorganize the zoning districts to group residential zones and use tables to present the standards. And when I'm saying standards, I'm referring to the dimensional requirements for lot width, depth, setbacks, height, et cetera. And right now, you're aware that you kind of have to go through each code chapter to read in a narrative listing form the requirements for that particular zone. What we're, what we're planning to do is actually array all those zones. And there's comparable standards in a table so that you can kind of see across the row what the standards are for each category of dimensions and in each zone. It'll make it easier to use. It also tends to lend, that, that array in a table format tends to be easier to understand from a form aspect as in a form-based code approach, because you can kind of visualize the way that the development will, how big or how set back it will be in the different zones. And you can, you can hopefully imagine that better. So, as we mentioned before, one of our tasks has been to reconcile the way that the city defines housing types with the way that the House Bill requires cities to define housing types. And compared to many other cities in Oregon that we're familiar with, King City kind of has a head start on this because you already define most housing as multi-family, multi-dwelling or multifamily. And you're very flexible in, in allowing housing to be attached on a single lot. And that's kind of a basic philosophy behind middle housing is that housing can be attached or there can be more than one unit on one lot. Also, King City's got a kind of head start on other cities of that your lots are already quite compact and your housing in the current, current King City area is already quite compact. And that's just the historical context of King City that helps, I think, set up this project for more success. So, most of the zones that were, in this third bullet here, I'm mentioning that we are going to include the neighborhood mixed-use zone in our amendments. But most of the zones that we are amending are the residential zones. I think there are nine of them, yeah. So I'm going to go through, yeah, this lists the, the single, what I call the single-use residential zones that we will be consolidating and the mixed-use zone that we will be setting up, kind of a future chapter that will be added on to, under the Kingston Terrace planning process. I should probably have backed up and told you that we're going in this direction because last planning commission, we presented three options for code amendments for the structuring of the code. This is a little bit beyond what House Bill would require you to do, but we thought that there could be, there were three options. One was simply update the dimensions, keep all of the structure of your current code in place, but just change numbers and words. The second option was to actually consolidate the residential zones into an easier-to-use chapter. And the third was kind of a complete restructuring of the entire code or setting that up. And where the planning commission landed and the direction that we're going in is to follow option two. That still sets you up to do option three in the future. Pause and ask if there are any questions at this point. Okay, so let me just go through this quickly. And if there are any specific questions, please feel free to interrupt me.
Hold on, Marcy. I'm sorry. If you guys have any questions or concerns, just raise your hands with the reactions because I can't see everybody with the current view that we're in. So, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would we be able to see what the current state is and then, and then almost like a side-by-side comparison between what we have existing and what the new proposal is going to be? So, so we can say have a side-by-side view of it?
I, I believe we will have track changes.
Okay.
Amendments, but not, but they may not be part of the presentation that we make in May. That must, may still be an overview type of presentation. And I know Keith, do you want to weigh in here?
I think maybe to a certain extent, we could show side-by-side. But what we're proposing to do, if you've, if you've taken a look at our community development code now, our, our zones are, all just have text descriptions of what the standards are. And so when you're looking through it, there, it's, it's just not very user-friendly because you really have to read everything down to the fact that the numbers are written out in, in English, not in numbers. So nothing stands out, so you have to read everything. It's kind of tedious. So I think we would note what gets changed, probably just for tracking it. We would note what gets changed in the text as it appears in the code now. And then we would just show the new version. We'll have to work with Marcy on how, how that would work. But I get your point that it would be nice if people can understand this is what we have now. This is what we're changing. This is what it's going to look like.
I'm just thinking, luck, luck for the general community, if there are going to be tunnel meetings or virtual meetings, they would have a good luck visual illustration of what the, or what it is today and what, what the changes are going to be. And if that is a visual sort of side-by-side comparison, would make it easy for people to understand what the changes are going to be.
You know, we, also in lieu of doing a blow-by-blow accounting of every page, every page in the code and how it gets changed, we could just have an example sheet. Here's from the single-family residential zone. This is what our standards look like today out of that section.
Yeah.
Show how we're going to change them and then go to the table and say, this is how they'd be reflected now. And then we're doing that for all of them. I think if we went through every page of the code, for most people, their eyes would glaze over after a while. They wouldn't know what you're talking about anyway.
Carol has a question.
Yes, I do. I'm wondering if there'll be any illustrations that you might find in a form-based code or even not in a form-based code, but illustrations of some of the pieces.
Yes, there will be more graphics to depict. The, the graphics could range from plan and section views of which, of where the developments, standards of the dimensional standards apply. Like very simple form-based code graphics tend to include a plan view of a lot and the setbacks and kind of like dimension lines that tie to the development standards table so that you can track what, what all the dimensions are referring to. They're very abstract, but they do help. And then there may be, there may be more illustrative views or axonometric three-dimensional views of housing types that would fit. They may not be in the code. They might be part of a supplementary guide. Any other questions at this point? Excuse me. Okay, so I'm going to move on just to actually, in this portion of the presentation, then talk about the public involvement with you quickly. So, this is an example of a dimensional standards table for another form-based code that we've worked on for housing, for middle housing. And this is the way that it can be arrayed. This would be where the dimensional standards table is listing all of the dimensional standards by housing type. And this may be actually, in discussions that I've had with Keith, I do think that this may be applicable to the Kingston Terrace area. So, but the, but there will probably be a different type of development standards table for the existing King City, and that would probably look a little bit more like this. So this is another form-based code that we worked on. And if you could just like imagine that these names of neighborhoods are actually replaced with the names of your zoning designations, then we would be have able to see, say, in a side yard setback, you'd be able to see how all of those compare from zone to zone to zone. And one of the consolidation improvements that we're planning to make is to kind of line up the zoning designation so that they're, they're the more dense small lot on one side and the more large lot on the other so that it has a form-based code kind of spectrum. It's the, provides the ability to read it in that way. All right, so I'm going to stop sharing and talk about the other piece of our, our task at this moment, which is to public involvement materials. So, I guess I'll share my screen again. What we're planning to do is, is kind of piggyback on the master plan project website and have these materials made available. So I would like to review these with you. And just know that we only have until May to collect information specifically on this effort. Our main goal for this project for public involvement is to make sure that people are aware of the changes and that they are aware of their opportunities to come before planning commission and city council and provide input. We don't have time to run a long survey or visual preference survey about this project. So the materials will include a newsletter. This is the general content of it. It will talk about what the project is and where it applies. It'll talk about the schedule that we've been on. And then it will consist of some frequently asked questions that we have heard and referred on other projects around the region regarding middle housing. And this document was included in your packet, so. Any comments about that? I don't see any comments or questions, so.
I don't see any.
Okay, then maybe we can move on to, you can move on to the next topic. I think Chair Petrie is muted.
That would be yes. Got to watch out for the clocks in my house, you know? The clocks go off on the hour, half hour and the quarter hour. So, you know, I don't want to bore you guys with that. The next item on the, on the agenda is the transportation system plan update.
How's it going? So, we had our first TAC meeting this last month. Keith and I had a number of comments on the way that the outline was going for streets, pedestrian modes, travel modes, those sort of things. We are at task six or milestone six on the scope of work for the transportation system plan. They really have a tight timeline. They need to get most of this wrapped up by June. So I think they're trying to pump out as much as possible lately. I believe most of those documents are on the kingcitytsp.org website, the available ones. Anyways, let's see, I think we had a pretty successful TAC meeting. I think our planning efforts are really a lot more coordinated with Tigerd than I would have thought initially. I think we, both cities have a desire to keep the transportation system plan functional and at a rather moderate scale. I don't think any of us want, you know, giant thoroughfares going through our areas. So, we're trying to make sure that whatever we do doesn't turn into a, a split or divide of the community. We are looking at ways that we can provide pedestrian crossings and still limit the number of intersections, it seems. Washington County isn't too keen on us putting too many intersections along Beef Ben, which, which we can understand. But we're still trying to keep Beef Ben somewhat respectable as a neighborhood road. So, there's a number of things that we're working on. Not, I haven't come up with any alternatives yet, so we're still waiting on transportation alternatives to actually surface and, and what those come out. So, not a lot to report beyond what we had last month. But we did have a number of comments. Keith, do you want to chime in on any of the issues with the pedestrian bicycle and all the different modes of transportation?
Yeah, so one of the deliverables that they gave us a draft copy and we had a lot of comments and they've gone back to redo. This was five C, it was a, a street standards or a standards, proposed standards piece. What should a local street look like? What should a neighborhood collector look like? What should our material look like and so forth? And most of that was okay, although it didn't, the standards that they had did not reflect all the different ideas that we had in our concept plan for the Kingston Terrace area. And it also focused on street cross-sections, just looking at the street across. How many lanes are there going to be bike lanes? Are there going to be sidewalks? Plan or strips, et cetera. And there wasn't really any, any design guidance on how do you deal with the intersections, looking down at them? You know, you can have a street that's two lanes and then you get to the intersection and then it's different. What happens is a bike lane when you get to the intersection, et cetera. So we wanted some more guidance there, also on roundabouts and traffic circles, which we might want to employ in different places. So we've asked them for some more information there and in a number of other places. But yeah, like Mike says, they've got a lot of work to do. And then in addition, just like with the master plan, we're trying to coordinate what the street system is going to look like because it's going to be so integrated with the land use.
Commissioner Bellows, you had a question perhaps?
Yeah. How is the transportation plan going to coordinate with the affordable housing? Housing plan? Because it costs $10,000 to keep a car in Oregon.
Right. I'm not exactly sure how the consultants are going to get these to intertwine. I do know that the transportation consultants through ODOT are basically going to get us to the point where we're adoption ready. And then that will have recommendations that carry forward in through, in and through the master planning process till eventual adoption, I believe in December of 2021. So, to answer your question, I'm not exactly sure how the transportation network is going to interface with low-income housing in our area. I think Keith and I have talked about how we can build our street network to make sure that it's transit-ready so that at some point in time, when TriMet finally decides to put a line down Roy Rogers or tie in the southwestern Washington County areas, that our transportation network or our system will be capable of handling those. And I think that's And I think that's the extent to which we've promoted so far.
Well, that will, yeah, that will tie in with where we put the, where we intend the affordable housing to be. Anyway.
Yeah. I think, and I could be wrong here, Keith, you could probably chime in as well, I, I would think the majority of the affordable housing would be near the town center area. On the far side over there, because that's where the majority of the density is kind of slated in and around the town center. Keith, you have a different opinion on that or?
I would think to a large extent that would be correct, although with House Bill 2001. Allowing up to fourplex in single family zones, we could have a little bit more variation in other places, but. I would say that the more, the most affordable will probably tend to be in the town center area. And that would be good too, because that's the one area where transit might be the most feasible in the future. You know, Roy Rogers Road is looking like a corridor that at some point would be ripe for having some kind of transit service going north, south. We've been talking with Tiger to enter him at about the possibility of having the route go on River Terrace Boulevard. Instead of Roy Rogers Road as it goes through our town center and theirs. Because it would be a more accessible street for people to walk to, and then when you get on and off the bus, the street crossings would be easier than they would be on Roy Rogers Road. So. We're looking into that, Trimet at this point isn't ready to commit to anything, but you know, I think what's, what Mike says is between the land use. The transportation system that makes it more walkable and easy to get to a future stop. Will be, will be helpful. You know, it's going to be, you know, for a really low income family, it's going to be tough living out here because you still are going to need to have a car, you know, I think the. The desire here is maybe you have a household that doesn't need two cars anymore, they can get by on one. You know, it's going to be that kind of a thing, it's not going to be like downtown Portland where you could go carless and get to everything you never need to do. So we're just trying to, to nip away at that a little bit to just try to make things better than they are right now. I guess another thing on the affordability, we're going to be looking at the master plan on just trying to make things affordable period, just. In terms of what the total SDC cost is going to be for streets, water, sewer, the whole package. And that, as you know, is really difficult. Everything, everything's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's where we want to have a, a nice array of street standards, so we don't have to go with the most expensive version that might be. For example, the best thing for auto traffic only, just try to come up with some ways that might be a little more economical either to build and or maintain.
That was another issue that was raised at the open house was how are we planning on doing affordable housing? In the midst of ever increasing cost for infrastructure, so. That's definitely, I think, one of the biggest challenges that.
I have Carol's hand up.
Are there any federal grants or anything with this huge infrastructure bill going on?
We have not tackled that yet. We have to get through the master plan first, then about that time, I think we could then apply for. You know. Transportation grants, things of that nature, Washington County is really good at kind of going for regional grants for transportation, so we have. MSTP and RTI Regional Transportation Improvement Program, I, I can't remember all the acronyms, but there's about. Three or four like big ones in Washington County and throughout Oregon. The problem is Washington County comes up with their RTP list and it's the Regional Transportation Project List, some of those are funded and some of those are constrained. I think the majority of the infrastructure in our area is under the constrained. Segment, and so it's listed as strategic improvements. But we do have funds through the. Oh, what is it, the? The transportation, there's a transportation tax, I'm forgetting what it's called right now. But Beef Ben essentially qualifies for that, as does Fisher Road. And we have 131st as well that qualify for those funds and it's the TDT tax, transportation development tax, what it's called. And it's on every new housing unit in development throughout the area. So we have those three facilities within King City borders that would qualify for funds. But like I said, they're all on the strategic list at this point in time and financial constraint. So some way we need to figure out to bridge that gap as we. Go through the master planning process and the transportation system plan process on how we pay for those infrastructure pieces.
Mike, I kind of just can't, one of the things that we all have to realize is that, you know, where it seems like the burden is being put. On the cities to provide affordable housing, there's so much behind the scenes that have to occur for people. Because incomes don't keep pace with the cost of housing. And there's so many people that are so far behind in their ability to close that gap. And I don't know what it is today, but a year ago when we were talking about this, you had to have. An income of at least $23 an hour to be able to afford just about anything. And in order to close that gap, I know that there is one Senate bill, I think it's Senate Bill 79, that is designed to help people. First time buyers get into a situation where they can afford to buy a home. The full burden cannot be on our communities to provide a housing that everybody can take advantage of. There's so much that has to be done in terms of apprenticeship programs and all those kinds of things that. Will help people earn a higher wage in order to be able to afford, but we're just trying to, you know, do our part. Close the gap to the best of our ability, but that's just a piece of it. So incomes are going to have to come up for so many people in order to be able to afford, and we're not talking about subsidized housing, people. Get really concerned and scared about that, but what we are talking about is trying to. And that doesn't say there wouldn't be, but the bottom line is, is that there's got to be a mix and a balance. For people to be able to afford to live anywhere in this region and you know, it's a challenge, there's no doubt about it.
Are there any other questions that we might be able to answer on this? Keith, did you have anything to add?
Had to find my cursor in the moon button, it took a while. I think the only, just a reminder again, is that with the transportation system plan, that is supposed to wrap up the work anyway by the end of June. However, we're not planning on adopting it until after the master plan is done, so if we need to make any adjustments back and forth. With the master plan and TSP, we'd be able to do that. And you know, we still have a fair amount of coordination to do. So on both of these plans, but I think the, the one thing that's nice is I think we're developing at least amongst the planners, a, a good working relationship with Tiger on their side, so. It's just going to contribute to the success of both of our respective development areas. So Mike, oh, one, one other thing we should probably talk about is the schedule for Marcy's work, so at least what we're. We, we were going with the, in understanding with, with DLCD that as long as we had a. Planning Commission hearing and by the end of May and a final hearing or a hearing draft by the end of May, we were good. We were told that no, actually looking at the, our agreement with the, the state, they're reading it to mean that no, we have to actually have at least a hearing with the city council. On the matter before June 15th. So we haven't finalized things yet, but what we'd proposed to Mike. Was that, and by we, I mean Marcy McInally and I. That we keep the schedule as it is right now for the planning commission so that you folks would have another. Meeting here in, in April to review a draft of the code amendments. You would have a, a hearing then at the end of May to review a, a hearing draft of the code amendments. And then we were proposing to Mike that maybe we could have a special city council meeting on June 9th. For the council at least to hear it, maybe not make a decision, but at least hear it. To fulfill our obligation with the state, so I don't know if that's a workable thing, but if it's not, and we have to juggle. When Planning Commission meets in May, we should probably figure that out in the next few weeks anyway, so, so everybody knows when, when we're going to hold those hearings.
Keith, we also have a placeholder on the. First Wednesday, I want to say of the month. Or planning commission meetings? Or is it the second, Mike, I can't remember off the top of my head, we haven't used.
First and third.
First.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned that first Wednesday of that month, I think there's something that I had on my calendar for that first week in June, so.
You mean for city council?
Yeah, for the city council meeting, I, I think there was like. Something else that I had, I just needed to verify with my schedule.
Well, the other thing with the ninth that I was thinking would be we would have the planning commission meeting, then there'd be enough time to turn around and get the comments and everything into a packet for the city council by the ninth, whereas the second would be compressed. But anyway, that's just something we'll have to work on.
It's like a Zoom meeting, you know, we pretty much do that.
Right.
John, you had your hand up earlier that we didn't get to, Commissioner Walters, you're muted right now. So you need to unmute.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yep, gotcha.
So. In the planning process that's, that's been going on, do we have kind of a. Very, very vague estimate of how many people will live in the new King City area? And how many people will live in this new area that Tiger is developing?
I'm not sure about Tiger, but I can tell you our area. I think with our area at anywhere from 33 to 3500 units, you're looking at. Two to 2.5 people per unit, so you look at about six to eight thousand total people.
Okay.
So you're probably looking at a total population of, you know, 11,000 to 13,000 people in King City by the time it's all said and done.
Okay, and then, and what you said is you don't know what Tiger's got going yet.
I don't know what River Terrace will generate for them, I don't even know how many units are up there, to be honest with you, John, I just haven't done any digging up there. But if you just use the calculation of about. You know, two and a half people per unit and I figure out how many units they're putting in up there, probably do the math. You know, for us, I think we're. We're estimating at a minimum, it's going to be, you know, 6,500 people additional, which would put the general population of King City at 11,500. And that's like minimum.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, with the, with the number of people. In King City and the number of people in Tiger and they all, a lot of them, the, I'm going to say the vast majority of them, we're going to have to get on Beef Ben Road and. I'm just concerned that if we, I'm not saying make a freeway out of it, but to continue to believe that we're just going to have this quaint little neighborhood road. I don't, you know, it just is kind of daunting to me to think that that many people. Will use a small road and, and get to where they need to get.
Yeah, well, I think other examples are going to be Cardi. Cardi, Walnut, McDonald, all run east west, all have four times population that we have, or even our projecting, so. They function just fine as a two or three lane road. And they, they, there's ways of doing this, our trans, our traffic engineers just have to get a little creative, you know?
Alright.
Yes, Commissioner Bellas.
I'm not sure this is the right forum, but have our building codes kept up with the. Affordable housing, the. EV plugins and things like that, because one of the concerns I have about the density is the amount of noise that's transmitted between attached dwellings.
That is a good question, I don't believe that they necessarily have, and they probably, that's something that we need to think about when we do this master plan, if we wanted to implement smart growth. Concepts, things of that nature, those are things that we can build into our plan. To encourage developers to include those type of entities and improvements to homes, like making all homes be. Wired with fiber or requiring homes to have energy plugins or electric vehicles, those sort of things are. Elements that we can develop through our master plan process that have implementation values that come later on.
Also, one other thing relating to building codes with House Bill, with this House Bill 2001 project, we are coordinating with our building official. So we want to make sure that the standards that we come up with in the zoning code are, are not contradictory to or confusing with what the building code would require. Because there are some places where zoning standards and building code standards sort of intersect. And we just want to make sure we're not at cross purposes.
And the fire code. I think the fire code is probably one of the more limiting ones. Any other questions for a good other order before we move on? Alright, Chair Petrie, back to you, you're muted. Chair Petrie, you're muted.
I'm chatting away here to myself, so staff reports, any of our staff in attendance have a report they'd like to share with the commission? That looks like a no. And I don't think that, I think Mike has probably shared any report that he had, do any of the commissioners have a report they'd like to share? Okay.
Per se, but I think the virtual open house seemed like that was a pretty good success, quite a, quite a bit of turnout for that. And I mean, you were kind of talking about Beef Ben a few minutes ago, it looks like they're, the county must be replacing ADA ramps on that, are they going to put a sidewalk in? Because it looks like they're just going to have ramps to, to dirt.
Yeah.
I wondered what they were doing.
Yeah, I think they weren't to code, so they had to have.
We did, we had a conversation about that just the other day and it doesn't, we didn't see anything that said. That there's a plan to put in new sidewalks to go along with this, so I know that Mike. Said that he was going to have a conversation with someone about the total plan, but we didn't see that in the initial conversation at all, so.
Yeah, because when I saw the, the contract award to the county, it was just the ADA ramps, there was nothing about sidewalks, so I didn't realize they were going to do the, the south side, I thought it was all just along.
Yeah, amazing. Anything else, folks? Okay, are we ready to consider adjournment? I don't see any opposition to that, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Annie, Annie makes the motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I will second it, that's Carol.
Alright, so let's just have a show of hands, all those in favor of a journey? No opposition, alright, this planning commission meeting is adjourned at 10:20.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.